The following program is closed captioned for the thinking impaired.
John Curtis is such a dick. I just want to say that for the record before we even start the show.
I was thrown off. I was not expecting that guy.
Sorry. So I just looked up like we're getting ready to go on the air. I didn't realize my mic was on. I look up and my post is live in five minutes. The topics Lori Keegan of the Methuen School Committee, Ozzy Osbourne, Lawrence and Methuen elections. There's one comment. It's John Curtis. And what's his comment? Don't forget to trash Hulk Hogan for beating up Rocky. But you know what? Fuck away.
He literally goes against everything you write.
Literally, like if I said I like blue, he'd be like, why do you hate red? You're a red hater. Like.
I mean, you should thank him though for like being your fan.
If anybody is sexually attracted to me on this planet, it's definitely that guy.
Oh my god.
Just saying. Just saying.
I was not expecting for you to say that.
My new shirt. Nancy got me a new shirt actually. Shouldn't say I got a new shirt. I'm too lazy to go and get a shirt. I haven't left the office. I've left the office like three times in the last two weeks.
I'm so over summer already. I speak in big summer time.
I do too. I do too.
The electric bill's high. I'm tired. Hi everyone and welcome in. Please like, share, share, share.
Yep. We just started tagging the show too. I noticed, oh shit, did I just do that? We just started tagging the show too, so people can find stuff when we're talking about certain topics.
Okay.
Ah, alright, we'll find it. We got Baba Pahs coming up.
Yes, we do. You ready?
Yeah.
Everyone.
Papa Papa. Oh, you were the yellow car. I didn't hear you. Where the hell is the... I don't even see a camera anymore. Where is the camera?
It's right here, right above me.
Oh, there it is. Okay. So I've lost it. I have no idea what to do with my Ozzy Osbourne video. Try this. Thank God there's a long intro.
Right. I like the intro more than the outro. Sorry, I said it.
You like the intro more than the outro?
Yeah.
I love the outro. I actually sing that in my car.
Well, I like the intro. We're starting, so you know. Drinks joy.
Papa Papa. Alright, where the fuck is that?
Alejandro's here with us.
Yep.
You know what I did? I had him sit on your chair before you got here.
Really?
Yep. And he was so confused as to the background and then the real background. He was like, what?
You know, I had this pulled up and ready. It was so easy to find. And now we're on the air and I can't find it.
Things happen.
Good story in my life, honest to God. Alright, I guess we'll stop the show. I'll try and find it as we go. Hopefully by the time we get to... Oh, there it is. How about that?
There you go.
Alright. Hi, how you guys doing? My name's Tom Duggan here with the Paying Attention Podcast. Higher top the Golden Seal Apothecary, right across the street from the Plush Valley Patriot offices on Main Street, North Andover. I think I'm a little higher. I think this is gonna do a little bit better.
Alright, you feel comfortable though?
Well, I actually like being higher, but I don't like my... Because I'm so fat now, I just don't want that on screen.
I'm sorry.
Alright, thanks for coming kids. Good night. That's the end of the show. That's it. It's all over.
It messes with my brain.
You know what? It's the humidity. I couldn't even get to TMF last night. I don't think... Since I've been in the hospital, I don't think I've missed three TMFs in a row. In fact, prior to going to the hospital, I'd never missed TMF at all.
I don't blame you.
Wow, look at that. Oh, that is so cool. My coffee cup is invisible.
Stop. Some people think that we really are at the whole studio.
Even what this day wouldn't have known until you said it out loud. People are so dumb. And we depend on that dumbness for this show here at the Paying Attention Podcast. Alright, so we got a bunch of things we want to get to. First though, we haven't had an open show, which we call it when we don't have a guest. We haven't had an open show now for probably three or four weeks. And there's been a couple of things before we get to the big topics, which we are gonna get to, honest to God. We're gonna talk about Ozzy and you're all gonna hate me by the end of the show, but that's fine. Let's see.
Let's thank our sponsors.
Oh, you're right. You are right. You are right. Okay, hold on. I had people texting me going, I can't find you. Yeah, we're on live, right?
Yes, we are.
Can you text that to me? Sure, okay.
I did. I'm already already commented.
Alright, very good. Alright, let's thank our sponsors. Stadium Chiropractic, Four Star Lighting, Terramar Mexican Grill. Now, here's the thing with Terramar Mexican Grill. They won the Taste of Lawrence. They won the Taste of Lawrence. We had five judges. I was one, so it was me and four others. There were, I think, 22 or 23 different restaurants that were represented at the Taste of Lawrence. We picked the top four. We did actually the top three, then we do a couple of honorable mentions. Terramar Mexican Grill was the number one among all five of us. Like, we all disagreed on who number two and three should be, but we all agreed on Terramar. So next Monday, one of the things that we like to do, and we don't, by the way, we don't get any money for this. I don't try and pitch them for advertising. This is just something we try to do to help the local community. So because they won, they get a free ad in the Valley Patriot, which is on the front page right this month, because we had no veteran this month.
No, I think it was Quality that was on the front.
Oh, you're right. They're in the middle pages. No, you're right. So one of the things that we're doing, we're gonna bring this back. We used to do it before COVID and then we stopped. We're gonna do what we call a flash mob lunch or a flash mob dinner, depending on what times we go. So next Monday, the 28th, if anybody wants to join us, we have, I think we pulled in our 15th person last night that's gonna come.
Really?
I know John Drew is coming. He's running for city council in Methuen. I know he's coming. By the way, nice kid. I mean, I'm surprised he wants to step into this swamp of politics. Because it just doesn't seem like...
Why do you think politics is like for bad people or like... Or you're like, what do you think selfish people?
Well, no, you know what it is? I think that when I see good people running for office, in my head, I think how jaded and angry and corrupt they're going to be five years from now. And I always think like, if you're a good person, why would you want to step into that arena?
But who made them like that? Was it the people, the process? Like, people suck.
Yeah. That's supposed to... That's my motto.
It is. I need to get your shirt. That's what's sad.
So we're gonna go next Monday night. If you want to come with us, so here's what we're gonna do. We're all gonna go to Terramar Mexican Grill. It's on South Broadway in Lawrence, where Sushi and... Nope. Where Yokohama used to be, right before Sacred Heart Church on the right-hand side, if you're heading toward Andover. And we're all gonna go. We're gonna pay for our own dinner. I'm gonna pay for intern girl because she's coming. We pay for our own dinner. We're not all gonna be able to sit together because there's gonna be too many of us too soon. But we're basically, we're gonna go and we're gonna take over the restaurant.
Yeah, because it's not that large.
We're gonna go in and we're gonna rate all the food. So whatever you order, if you want to come, whatever you order, you want to take pictures, post it on Facebook, check in on Facebook, so that, you know, they get the check-ins. Post it on the Mary McValley Eats pages if you can, and then rate them. Maybe you liked the chalupa, but you didn't like the tacos. Maybe you liked the burrito, but you didn't like the chalupa. But rate it and, you know, give them a good feedback as to what you liked and what you didn't like and why. And this is, I think, a good way to... We're gonna do this every month now. We're gonna try and do it maybe a couple of times a month, depending on how many people we can get. But we're gonna try and do this and try and help local businesses. We would do quality catering in Methuen because they won the Taste of Methuen, but they're a catering business.
They don't have a restaurant.
And so a shout out to Alvin. He's alright. A shout out to Alvin, Alvin Elcorn over at Quality Cater and Evette. Did you see how great he's out?
Yes. He used to be her son's teacher.
Really?
Yeah.
Really? She came out and she gave me a hug. And I was like walking on clouds for the next three days. I'm like, she hugged me.
You also asked her if she was single.
I didn't see the ring because she was wearing a glove. And I'm like, how do I, how do I in a nice, easy way like find out without... And I was like, you know what? I'm just gonna ask. I'm like, hey, you're wearing a glove. I can't see if you have a wedding ring on or not. She's like, no, I don't.
She's a sweetheart and she cooks really good.
She's so nice and she's so beautiful. She's such a nice person. I'm gonna actually pull this up just a little bit because I just, for some reason, just doesn't seem like... Alright, do a little on-air production. Alright, where else are we? So if you want, by the way, if you want to join us, please reach out. I'd like to know how many people are coming, so I can let them know how many people are coming. We're doing it on a Monday because that's usually when restaurants have their slowest day, so we want to bring them some business.
We're gonna do a whole bunch of content that day.
Yeah, we're gonna do a bunch of stuff. We're all gonna post on Facebook and do selfies. And what we really want to do is we really want to boost the publicity, the public profile of Terramar Mexican Restaurant. And then next month, we're gonna pick somewhere else. We're gonna...
One of the like second and third places too?
Well, I want to try and get to all of them, right? From Taste of Methuen and Taste of Lawrence. But I'm also taking suggestions. So if there's a new place that's just opened, you know, we want to try and help them out, right? I know that there's two...
They can also help out by, like, you know, buying an ad on the paper.
That's true. Like, we're not doing it for that. I want to make it clear that we're not doing this to shill for ads.
Sorry, I'm ambitious.
No, but listen, but you're right. I mean, it helps keep the lights on. And, you know, I get almost no salary for doing this, but I'm just trying to help. Vaca was really good. I think they got honorable mention. They went in the top three, but they got honorable mention.
Yeah, they're pretty good.
And I'm trying to remember who came in third at Taste of Methuen. I know second was George's Bakery. It's not a restaurant, so it's not like we can go there. But we're gonna try and do that. We're gonna try and do as many local places. I know there's a few places in Haverhill that have been wanting to try. And I know that I went with Zaka from AFC Urgent Care over to that new Korean barbecue, Jason's Korean Barbecue.
Yeah, by Dave Ryan's.
It's a little pricey though. And so I don't know if I want to do a flash mob dinner at Jason's, given her price. It's a little pricey. I'm not gonna say it's very expensive, but it's... For the people that... I want to go to places where the people that are following us, that don't have a lot of money, but want to participate can, right? So anyways.
It's also a good way to network, so if anybody's interested, please reach out.
It's gonna be fun. Listen, I had Scott and Jennifer Mendez and I had Tom and Lucy Fallon, were my four judges at the Taste of Lawrence and the Taste of Methuen. And we had so much fun. Like, we all sat at the same table. We all went in our own different direction. We all tried different foods at different times, right? So nobody could compare notes and go, well, I like this, I don't like this. Then, you know, I don't want anybody, I don't want anyone to influence anybody else's vote.
Are you going next year, by the way?
And we scored where?
To the Taste of Methuen?
Oh, absolutely.
Are you banned? Can they ban you from going?
Well, let's chat about that for a second.
Yeah, we should. We should talk about it.
I wanted to get through my list. Let me get through my list and we'll come back to Taste of Methuen. Alright, so we also, Quality Catering, W3ON website, website design, Prime Insurance, the Doug Mercurio Law Office. If Doug is out there, we need to meet before the August edition because we really need his money. Enterprise Bank, soon to be Rockland Trust, God help us all. Pleasant Valley Landscaping, Contractors, AFC Urgent Care, Clear Path for Veterans, New England, JG's Ice Cream. Boy, if you're not going to JG's Ice Cream when it's like this, then shame on all of you. Tomo and Shake and Seafood, my brother Danny is gonna be back from Florida next Tuesday. The first thing he said when he texted me, he said, "I'm gonna be up on Tuesday. I've gotta fly in for something. Can we get to Tomo's before I leave?" Absolutely. So I'm gonna miss John Drew's fundraiser because my brother's gonna be in town, but I'm gonna try and meet him afterwards. EIS Investigation and Gun Training, Marston and Sign Construction, the sexiest woman alive, Gina Zanny Pesci, the Zanny Pesci Law Office. And by the way, thank you to Gina Zanny Pesci for bringing a Valley Patriot with her to Venice, Italy.
I know.
And doing pictures with the Valley Patriot. We have this thing, for those of you interested, the Valley Patriot around the world. And it started with my dentist, Dr. Gomer, who did a world tour with his wife. He took six months off. He closed his business for six months and did a world tour. And he went to Iceland and he went to Italy and he went to Rome and he went to Spain and he brought Valley Patriots with him. So everywhere he went, like, here he is in front of like, you know, the Taj Mahal and here he is in front of like...
Ooh, the Eiffel Tower. I know of that.
It was great. The Eiffel Tower, like, we had, some of his best pictures were from Iceland. By the way, if I ever flee the United States, you want to look for me in Iceland.
Yeah, I want to go there so bad.
There are Israel. So Gina Zanny Pesci, thank you to her and hopefully, and I am gonna endorse her. I'm gonna endorse her for city council. She...
Of course.
We need two more years of that, trust me when I tell you. She's doubled over. I don't even know why. And that's probably not a good thing either, that I don't know why. Alright, so let's get back to... So before we get into the topics, a couple of things we want to get to. You know, I'm gonna try and do this without trashing somebody. I'm gonna try, right? Because I just...
Uh-oh. Who are we gonna talk about first? I want to know.
Methuen Exchange Club.
Oh.
Is an organization that I used to belong to. I used to be a member of the Methuen Exchange. I was a member of the Methuen Exchange for three years, or two years. Going back to, and I actually looked this up the night that this incident happened. I went back and I looked it up. That, starting in, so the Valley Patriot started in 2004. Starting in 2006, we started going to the Taste of Methuen and rating the different dishes. And from first to third, and we didn't start off giving free ads to the winners or anything. We would announce it on Facebook. We'd announce them in the paper. We put the winner's picture in the paper, holding the dish that won, just to give some free publicity to the Methuen Exchange who runs it.
Since 2006.
Six.
Six. So 19 years.
Yes.
Okay.
And I went back and I found pictures of me and Jack McLeod with the winners. One year, the winner was, and I remember almost all the winners because the food, I'm a food guy, right? So one year, the winner was the Fireside Restaurant. They had a pulled pork macaroni and cheese that was so friggin unbelievable that I brought four friends that day. And all four, just kind of like with Terramar Mexican Grill, we all got together afterwards. We went, yeah, there's no dispute. We all know who wins this one. This is an easy one. And I know that the roast beef at Royal House of Roast Beef won one year. And I could probably tell you, if I sat down and I really did like a list, I could probably tell you who won which year. We did it every year. When COVID hit, we stopped because everything was shut down. And the year after COVID, 2021, everything was still kind of shut down. Because this is an event that usually happens in the spring or early summer. So the year after that was 2023, where it was Tom. Tom was in a coma, right? So 2024 came around last year. We were gonna do it again. And where did I end up? I ended up back in the hospital. So this year, I said, if I'm not in the hospital, there's no more COVID. We gotta get back to doing this because it's good to go in and give free publicity to the Exchange Club. Free publicity to the businesses. It helps that we pay at the door. We don't go in and say, we're giving you free publicity in exchange for tickets. We pay at the door, right? And we promote the event for two weeks or more before the event. Every day on Facebook, I'm posting the event that we're gonna be going, that we have taste testers. If anybody wants to join us, please come. You can sit at our table. And we really go out of our way to do this, just like every single year up until two years ago, when they have the Methuen Exchange Club Police and Firefighter of the Year. Tom Duggan goes to the event, as busy as I am and as sick as I am, Tom Duggan still goes to the event, goes live at the event, promotes the event. Takes the pictures of the cops and firefighters that won the police officer and firefighter of the year, put them on the front page, prime real estate for any newspaper. Not only have I never gotten a thank you, this year what I got was, I walked into the room at the Irish Cottage. Jack McLeod came over and said hi to me. We chatted a little bit about how I'd missed the last few years because I'd been sick. He gets up at the microphone. Now, he knows I'm there. Five seconds before he gets up to the microphone, we had a long conversation about how this is my first time recovering it again. I'm looking forward to putting it back on the front page of the paper. He gets up at the microphone and thanks the Methuen Cable Access and Methuen Life for being the only media in the room. I turned around and I fucking walked out. Now, I'm not, I never am gonna get upset if I don't get accolades at a microphone. If someone gets up, they want to announce everyone in the room and forget me. I'm never gonna care about that. I don't care. Honest to God, I don't. But if you're gonna get up after, seconds after talking to me, and you're gonna say the only people in the room are my competition, Methuen Life doesn't put you on the front page of the paper.
No, they don't. Who reads that, by the way?
And listen, God bless them. They're not really a newspaper. They do something different than what we do. They're like a feel-good community paper. There's certainly a place for that in every community. I think it's actually a decent publication, but not for anything, you know? Like, it would be like me getting up at the bash every year and like the one media outlet that actually comes and gives us free publicity, I get up and I say, oh, by the way, their competition is here and not mention them. Like, what the hell is that? So I knew that Jack McLeod and people at the Methuen Exchange, a couple of people at the Methuen Exchange, obviously had a problem with me, for whatever reason. And we can talk for hours about what that could be because I'm an explosive person. I'm a controversial person. But whatever, I don't really care what people think about me. But I do care about us getting a public slap in the face. So did I go home and post it on Facebook and complain? No, I didn't. No, I didn't.
You let it go?
I let it go, which is not characteristic of me, but I let it go. Because I really do like the work that the Methuen Exchange does. And I also understand that sometimes people are in a bad mood and they do stupid things. And you want to give them, I give everybody a mulligan. So why am I bringing all this up? Because we went to the Taste of Methuen this year, promoted it for two weeks beforehand, paid at the door, rallied people to go. We had at least 15 people showed up because of us who paid at the door, $40 apiece.
Jesus.
$40 apiece, okay? We went, we had a table. We were very clear about what we were doing. We had, everybody had a clipboard and a pen and we walked around. We took pictures with people. I said hi to Jack McLeod. I said hi to the other guy, Jen's father. I said hi to people that were running the Taste of Methuen. It was very clear what we were doing. There was nobody that didn't know what we were doing. And at the end of the night, we took a picture. Quality catering won. We took a picture with quality catering. We're thinking, you know what? This was a really good thing. We all came out. We had some fun. We raised some money for the Taste of Methuen. We raised some money for the Exchange Club. We met some great people. We gave some free publicity to some great local restaurants that cost us money to go to. And this is a great thing. So we go, I go home and I post the pictures of the winner and we do a little write-up. And I get a phone call from somebody connected to, but not part of, the Methuen Exchange. Who said, boy, are they mad at you. What the hell are they mad at me for? He said, well, they said you didn't have their permission to be there to do that. I fucking need their permission to...
You don't do that.
I need their permission to go to their public event and promote their public event for free. So I said, you know what? This person's breaking my balls. There's just no way that's possible. I was a member of the Methuen Exchange. I've done more for the Methuen Exchange than half the people that are on the board of the Methuen Exchange. And I've never asked for credit for it. I've never said, please praise me for it. But I surely don't want to slap in the face for it either. And I said, you know what? There's just no way that that's true. So I went about my day. I forgot about it. Three days later, someone posted on the Methuen Community Sound Off page, saying how... I know that this was someone who either was part of the Methuen Exchange or someone who was related to someone who runs the Methuen Exchange, because it was exactly what the person told me on the phone. And it was complaining that, how dare the Valley Patriot come to the Methuen Exchange? There is no such thing as the best of the Taste of Methuen. They completely made it up. They made other, they announced winners and made other people feel bad. Obviously, this person has everybody deserves a trophy attitude, right?
Liberals.
And they went on and on. I feel bad for the quality catering because they think they actually won something and denigrated the Valley Patriot, again, denigrated me and the Valley Patriot for doing something good. Now, listen, I do a lot of shitty things in this community. I go after people that I think need to go after. I challenge politicians, as you're gonna find out in a few minutes. I challenge politicians in a very explosive way. I post a lot of things on Facebook that are very offensive. If someone doesn't want to like me for that, I get that. Someone wants to come at me for that, I'm okay with that. I can hold my own and I'm never gonna, I'm never gonna cry about it. But it's really, it's really bizarre to be, when you're doing something good, to have someone attack that you're doing something good.
But it's also like the name itself, the Taste of Methuen. People go, they try different dishes, and then they decide themselves which one's best. They just happen to do it publicly. I don't see a problem with that. People take pictures. People do content. They take videos.
People are going live. They're doing selfies.
Yeah, so what's the deal?
Yeah, Jack McLeod didn't call any of those people. Of course, it's personal. Of course, it is. There are people involved with the Taste of Methuen, the Methuen Exchange, who are friendly with the other newspaper in Methuen. Who I'm sure complained and said, how come he's getting all this publicity? Boop, boop, boop. So I was really taken back by all of it. Because what a way to shit on a good thing. And I didn't want to bring it up, and this is now two months ago. I've been sitting on this for two months. But we've had guests and we've had other things happening and I kind of forgot about it. But we're getting ready to do the Taste of Massachusetts. It's gonna be a Taste of... So after Methuen Exchange, we went to the Taste of Lawrence, which is a week later. The same judges came. We did the same thing we did at Taste of Methuen. You know what the people who run the Taste of Lawrence said? Thank you. That's what they said. Because most people, when you do nice things for them, they say thank you.
I didn't even know there was a Taste of Lawrence until you brought it up.
Right, right.
So it really is helpful. And I think they do it to do like fundraising, right? Isn't it for fundraising and also to help local businesses, right?
Right, right.
That's the intention.
Right. The Methuen Exchange does it to raise money for the Exchange because they do do good things in the community.
They do. I actually did a trip to the Dominican Republic, thanks to the Exchange Club. We helped, I think it was 10 water tanks, like install in really like poor poverty places.
That's awesome. That's awesome. You know, I just want to caution those of you who are in this political morass. If you're a nonprofit, why are you gonna complain if somebody does something good just because you don't like the person doing it? Like, if someone who doesn't like me goes on a podcast and says they love the Valley Patriot, why would I then go, how dare he say nice things about me? I don't like him. Like, that's just so closed-minded.
It's personal.
So I called a few people. I'm gonna end with this. I called a few people that I know that are affiliated with the Exchange Club. And one of them, I said, is it true that this is all coming from Jack McLeod and a certain other person whose name I'm not gonna mention because I actually really do like the guy and I just think he's wrong? And this person said, they were furious. It was all they could talk about for two days. How dare you go? You didn't have their permission. They didn't know about it. You know, you should at least told them what you were doing. I actually said hi to Jack McLeod while I was scoring a restaurant. And then they said, and you've never done this before. They wish they had known.
And then you came with the receipts.
So I went back and I looked at this picture of me and Jack McLeod, like outside the, one year, the Greater Lawrence Tech came in third place because of their clam chowder. It was amazing. And there's a picture of me and Jack McLeod at the Greater Lawrence Tech table, like with the food, like posing with a Valley Patriot.
Oh my god, Greater Lawrence Tech has the best clam chowder.
It's amazing. It's amazing. It's amazing.
I went to school there. I used to eat all the time.
So I am gonna be doing in the next few weeks, maybe even next week, depending on what happens politically, I'm gonna be doing, we're gonna be doing a food show. So we've done a few restaurant review shows. The last one we did, I think, was a year ago this week.
I have those microphones, the wireless. We can do it anywhere.
Okay. No, I want to come in and I want to show pictures of food, of places that we've gone. And I want to talk about... So the last year, and I promise we're gonna get into the important stuff real soon. The, so what I did was I went through categories, like the best Chinese food, the best Italian food, the best seafood, and we kind of did it that way. Alright, so let's get into a couple of other things before we get into... So we went to the Prospect Hill Concert.
Yes, we did.
Was that not amazing?
That was amazing. I had so much fun.
Those guys were great.
Got a little drunk.
We had a good time. And you know what was really funny is we walked in and of course, this is a very much younger crowd than me, right? I'm an old guy now. I'm a big fat old guy. And so I go walking in and this beautiful young, I'm gonna guess 25-year-old comes over and she was like...
She was in her thirties.
The blonde, she was, she was...
She was in her thirties.
You know, I'm trying to be nice here.
Like late thirties.
You know, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be nice.
I know, but she was in her late thirties.
See how she, and I'm the guy that gets the crap, right?
What's wrong with being late thirty?
What's wrong with saying she looks like she's 25?
Because she doesn't. She's not.
I thought she did. I thought she looked 25.
Late thirty. But still, a beautiful woman.
Alright, that's the end of the show. I'm done.
She's still a beautiful woman. Alright, go ahead.
So she comes over and she's like, hi, I'm Andrea and I love following you on Facebook. I love the Valley Patriot. I watch your podcast all the time. Can I do a selfie with you? And it felt good because I go places a lot of times and I get, oh, you're Tom Duggan. I get that. So it's always good to get the positive. A few minutes later, a woman comes over and says, oh my god, you're Tom Duggan. And I'm like, yeah. She goes, can I get a picture with you? So intern girl takes my phone to take a picture and she grabbed my ass while we were doing the picture and she goose me. And I was like, you know what? Every once in a while, I get depressed and I'm 58 years old, but I think I still got it. I think I still got it, so.
I felt like I was with a celebrity over there. I don't know. You were sitting there. Everybody's coming up to you.
People coming over to me, yeah. And then we went backstage. We hung out backstage. That was fun.
I had a little issue, but I'm over it.
Yeah, it happened, especially when there's drinking involved on everybody's part.
Especially when you look good. That's the problem.
By the way, you're not wrong about that.
Thank you.
One of the things that I learned from hanging around with beautiful women, and I like to hang around with beautiful women all the time because it makes me feel good. I noticed that when you are a beautiful woman and well-dressed, there are always going to be other women sneering at you and trying to set you up for some kind of conflict to make you look bad. And I have beautiful women friends that used to tell me that all the time and I never believed it.
It's true.
I know. I said, you know what? It's in your head. You women, you women just don't like, just can't get along with each other.
That's why I have no girlfriends. I have my sister and my cousins. That's it.
By the way, marriage material. That's one of my rules. If you can meet a girl that doesn't have a lot of friends, because I'll tell you, the number one, the number one leading cause to divorce is the wife's friends. The number one cause of divorce is the wife's friends. Trust me when I tell you that. Alright, what else do we have? Oh, we also went to the Lions Club.
Love, love, love the Lions Club.
Yep. And you should join, by the way.
I'm waiting for the invite. I told them, yes, I'm interested.
So Mark Alexander, our district governor retired. We had a retirement party up at Maria's in Haverhill. That was a lot of fun.
He got a tattoo.
He got a tattoo of the Lions, which was also pretty funny. And so I meant to put those pictures in the paper. If somebody reminds me, I'll get them in for the next edition. I was very full this month. Alright, and I think we have everything else.
Alright, let's get to the juicy stuff.
So we get two things. We get the local story, which we're gonna spend some time on. And we get the Ozzy story that we'll spend a little time on, but not a whole lot. And we also have the local candidates, which we can do after the Lori. I guess we can just go right into Lori Keegan, right? You want to do that?
Yeah, sure.
Alright, let me pull up the Lori Keegan.
Prepare yourselves, everyone. Sit down. Wherever you are, make sure you sit down, alright? Have an open mind.
So here's the thing. Let me start off with this. The Methuen School Committee is a friggin nightmare. They're a friggin nightmare because the majority of the board has sold out the taxpayers of Methuen. And I would say the taxpayers of the Commonwealth because they get a lot of state money and they also get a lot of federal money. And I would say the taxpayers of the Commonwealth, because they get a lot of state money, and they also get a lot of federal money. And your school committee, led by, uh, well, it doesn't matter who leads it. Uh, the school committee has, uh, looked the other way of, from a lot of corruption that's going on. One of the reasons they look the other way is that there's a lot of shenanigans that are happening that people are benefiting from, okay?
Okay.
So, I've been watching for the last two years. I've been very quiet about most of it. Um, I know a lot of people think that, like, I just kind of shoot from the hip and don't know what I'm talking about when I, when I do things like what I'm about to do. Uh, and I just want to caution you all that I actually know a lot more than you might think I know.
You always know a lot more than I think you know.
I, I, I know, I know, I don't always like to tip off my hand. Um, this is just so, so weird. Put it over here.
Yeah, put it in, not even there, it's cool.
Um, so I've been watching, and I watched what Laurie Keegan did, disgraceful, what she did to Kristin Maxwell. And the, uh, about a letter that Kristin Maxwell had done. It was in the Eagle Tribune. This was all designed because Kristin Maxwell asked questions of the superintendent and the administration in the Methuen Schools that the superintendent and the administration don't want answered in public. They're considering, they're fudging numbers. I'm gonna tell you right out of the gate, they're fudging numbers. You can take my word for it. They're fudging numbers. And, uh, people are starting to speak out about it, and there's an audit going on of the Methuen School funding. And the school committee decided, now, what, what would you think if this was your community? Let's say you don't live in Methuen, but you live somewhere else. And you found out that your school superintendent had an audit going on, somebody was auditing your school superintendent's spending. And before the audit was over, the school committee rushed to give her a three-year contract with a one-year automatic extension.
Didn't she, like, not have the credentials for it? Is that the one?
That was the one she replaced.
That's the one, okay.
So she came up under Judy Scannell, which should set off a lot of red flags to begin with.
Okay.
And I'm never gonna, I'm never gonna blame, uh, this superintendent for what the last superintendent did. However, this superintendent did come up under the last superintendent and, and made her chops learning from the last superintendent, how to do certain things. It's, uh, it's, uh, Brandy Kwan.
She used to be my, my principal when I was at the CGS.
Now, listen, in full disclosure, I don't know if she's a nice person or not. Everyone that I know that knows her says she's a really nice person. So, when you're, when you're listening to this show in your car, or you're watching it on Facebook, or wherever it is that you're consuming this show, please refrain, please try and stop yourself in your head from assigning a motive to why I say what I say. Because I get this a lot, and we're gonna talk about this with the Aussie thing in, in, in a few minutes. People always like to dismiss what you're saying by attacking your motive, thereby changing the subject.
Happened to me.
Laurie Keegan tried that on Facebook yesterday. She's not getting away with it today, alright? So, I, it's not that I dislike Brandy Kwan. She's never like, you know, cut me in line and Dunkin' Donuts, you know, she's never said anything bad about me. In fact, I don't think she's ever said anything about me. I don't even know that she knows that I exist. Uh, so this has nothing to do with personal, but there's a lot of shenanigans going on in the schools. And I've been following what's been going on for a while, and I see that Kristin Maxwell, um, is trying very hard to get answers to some questions that people in the administration don't want her to have. And because they don't want her to have answers to these questions, certain members of the school committee, including Laurie Keegan, have decided that they're going to try and destroy Kristin Mack, Kristin Maxwell's credibility. And every time she says something, every time she proposes something, they vote no, they denigrate her. She actually, Laurie Keegan actually said at one meeting, and I know I'm remembering this right, something to the effect of, "You're only on the school committee because your kid can't read." Yeah, yeah, okay, so this is...
They undermine her a lot, by the way.
Totally undermining her. So, there's a school committee election coming up. And for the first time in a long time, you've got nine candidates running for, I think, six seats. And I think the mayor breaks the tie, so I think it's six plus one, right? People start calling me and they start saying, "Now that we've got candidates, why don't you start exposing Laurie Keegan for what she is?" And when I first started getting those calls from within the administration, by the way, I was like, "Well, I, one thing I don't like is I don't like being used," right? And so I know that there are people in the administration who don't like Brandy, who by default don't like Laurie, who want me to carry their water for them and go after Laurie. And so I kind of refrained a little bit, and then I sat back and I watched a little bit more. And then I finally had enough. So I posted on Facebook a couple of days ago, probably almost a week ago, that I was looking for candidates for Methuen School Committee. And that I was going to endorse, I was gonna try and put together a team of five people to run, who are basically going to do this. Stop the DEI nonsense in the schools, stop the transgender bullshit in the schools, to give parents more control. You know, it's one thing if the schools want to teach sex to your kids, but it's quite another if they're not telling you about it and they're concealing it from the parents.
You know what? Some teachers actually bypass that. I, at least my son's teacher last year, if anything was happening, like a movie per se, that, you know, it was very simple. She would always reach out and say, you know, "If you don't want your child to participate, please let me know." Some teachers do, they, they're very mindful about, about including the parents.
So I'm looking for candidates that are gonna get in and stop the political nonsense. Because let's face it, they can do all the political double talk that they want, but at the end of the day, they're graduating kids from, from Methuen High School. They can't read and write. They can't, they can't, they don't know sentence structure. They don't know how to do math in their head. And if you ask them the five rights and the, and the First Amendment to the Constitution, they can't tell you, alright? So, Ken Willett has been amazing on that, on that school board. He talks a little much. I know people roll their eyes when he starts to talk. I get it. However, you go to war with the army that you have, not the army that you wish you had. Nobody's perfect, right? You can't have a perfect candidate.
His intentions good.
Kristin, and, and he votes the right way, right? He votes the right way. Kristin Maxwell also voting the right way. Not on everything, but she's...
Very, very, very nice. Um, she, she stopped by my, my home, and I introduced this to some of my neighbors and stuff.
Yeah, you gotta get her some votes up there. So I'm trying to put together a group of people, and I posted a little survey online. And here are my questions. Now, if you want to be a member of the Methuen School Committee and you want me to help you and be part of my five-member team, that we're gonna try and get elected, and I want to put together five people because today I get along with DJ Boragad, but tomorrow I might not, and he's probably going to get re-elected, most likely. And he's gonna be chairman of the committee, and, but you can't count on his vote, because he's a, he's a mayor first and a school board chairman second, okay? And that's true for any mayor in any community. If you're a mayor of a city and you chair a school board, you're mayor first, chairman of the school committee second. So I have, uh, a, a bunch of questions that I put together. Question one, Donald Trump is A, a Nazi, B, a capitalist. If you answer that question wrong, don't bother answering the rest of the questions. And that's why I made it first, because if you're a nutty, trumped, deranged candidate who's gonna get in there and, and rail with your hatred about all things that are Donald Trump or all things that anybody agrees with Donald Trump on, if Donald Trump says, "We shouldn't, we, we, we should save kids from burning schools," you're gonna vote no on that, because Donald Trump said so, we don't want you around. Question number two, DEI, which is diversity, equity, and inclusion.
That doesn't work.
Doesn't work at all.
Doesn't work. I'll tell you firsthand, it doesn't work.
It's just outright racism. It's racism and hatred. A, something that should be integrated into all of government. B, a racist concept that has no place in government. So I had a school committee candidate reach out to me last night. She answered that one wrong, and I was heartbroken because I kind of, I kind of, I had a short conversation with her online, and when she got that one wrong, she also got the next one wrong. Next question is, children in public schools should learn A, America was founded on racism and white supremacy. B, global warming, transgender rights, abortion, and social justice. C, all of the above. D, none of the above. She also got that one wrong.
That's a good one.
She still wants to have coffee, and I will still have coffee with her.
Sure, listen to what she has to say.
She's not getting my endorsement. And then the final one, uh, was superintendents and their employees, A, should have more say than parents over what kids are taught and how they are treated in schools. Or B, should recognize that parents and only parents should have any say over what gets taught, and schools need to be 100% transparent with the parents of what goes on in the classroom. Now, why did I pick those four questions? I picked those four questions because Laurie Keegan would fail all four of those questions, and I want to stop her from building a coalition on the school committee, because... I'm gonna pull this up now. God bless you, Alejandro. Salud.
Salud.
Salud. So I, I, I had a bunch of people call me and ask me, and email me and ask me, like, "Why those questions? Why aren't you asking about curriculum? Why aren't you asking about math? Why aren't you asking about history?" And here's why, okay? I, and I posted a picture of Laurie Keegan. She's a member of the Methuen...
Can I share it?
School, yeah, you can share it out. And a lot of people did ask. Meet Laurie Keegan of the Methuen School Committee. She wants boys to be able to, she wants boys to be able to beat up girls. The IT department spy on school employees to identify educators who oppose this garbage and to intimidate employees to silence any leaks. I know, because two of my sources have already been warned. Then I wrote, "Hey DJ," that's DJ Boragad, the mayor, "this is why they don't want the city to control the IT department." "When you finally do take over the IT department in the schools, you should be ordering a full forensic audit of all of those servers." And that's gonna be important, because at some point in the very near future, the schools are gonna take over, yes?
They couldn't hear when I had the picture. I don't know why. But I, I, now they can hear you. Can everyone hear now? It looks like it's, I can hear it, here.
Alright, okay.
Sorry about that.
Uh, Keegan, Keegan also wants DEI, that's diversity, equity, and inclusion in every school, and she wants young children exposed to pornography and sexual material in the schools. By the way, that's the only one she actually tried to, tried to dispute. She even had a cheerleading fundraiser shut down in the middle of a game that was a scholarship, to, to raise scholarship money in the name of a Methuen cheerleader who passed away. By the way, I actually have proof of that. So for those of you who are sending me, for the collards who are privately sending me messages saying that I'm lying about that, we actually have proof of that. She, her, or they, them, is pushing politics in the classroom as well as, uh, as well, and she's not alone. That's why she's on the Methuen School Committee, to push her freakish political agenda onto your kids now that she has successfully pushed it onto her own. And if she was only one voice in the wilderness, I wouldn't care. But she has mustered a coalition on that committee and, uh, and in the schools and made deals to get her agenda pushed through. That's why I'm making a call to action in the community to recruit five candidates and get sane people elected to stop this nonsense. Okay, so that's what I posted online. Um, we have over a hundred comments on that. People are a little shocked, because Methuen is not exactly known for being woke central. It's not Andover, right? And a lot of people who are moving in shakers in the community were shocked, because let's face it, most people don't watch the school committee meetings. Quite frankly, I mean, I live in North Andover. It's hard for me to get through a Methuen School Committee meeting.
I don't think I've ever watched.
But it's a lot easier to get through a Methuen School Committee meeting than it is a Lawrence School Committee meeting, and that's another whole show in and of itself. Shortly after posting this, I'm gonna say this was up for probably about a day and a half, Laurie Keegan comes on my page, and she says, she, not only does she come on my page, but Dan Chabilla, because he's a coward, had his wife come on my page. So the two of them came on at the exact same kind, same time, and said, basically, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, cause I'll be, spend the whole day here reading. I'm just gonna give you the encapsulation. Basically, came on and said, "I can't believe, anybody would believe any of the trash that you post on your page. I can't believe anybody listens to anything you say." Quote, "Everything you said was a lie." Okay? Everything I said was a lie. Well, we actually have proof that the cheerleaders were having a fundraiser at a football game to raise scholarship money in the name of a former cheerleader who had passed away. And why, this was in the middle of the game. She didn't like stop it beforehand. They promoted it beforehand. She didn't do that. And I went on and I said, "Okay, well, look." Cause this is the best part of me doing stuff like this. I get a lot of emails, a lot of people grab me when they talk to me and go, "Why do you do that kind of stuff? Like, you know, you picked a fight with someone you didn't have to. Maybe you might need her later on. Maybe she could buy ads. You just, you just stopped her from ever wanting to buy ads in the Valley Patriot." And I tell them all the same. I'm gonna tell you what I tell them when they ask. If no one else is gonna call her out, I'm gonna do it. And they said, "Well, what if you're wrong about some of what you said?" I said, "That's the beauty of what I do." That's the beauty of journalism. If I got something wrong, she's gonna come on my page and say, "You got it wrong." And I'm gonna ask her specifically, "What did I get wrong?" So that's exactly what I did. She came on my page and said, "It's all a lie." So I said, "Fine, if it's all a lie, are you, does that mean to say that you're, you're telling me right now, in public, on the record, on Facebook, that you're against boys going into girls bathrooms? Is that what you're saying? Are you telling me on the record that you, your stand is that you are against boys playing on girls teams?" She wouldn't do it. She wouldn't do it. Are you telling me that you're against puberty blockers for kids who are underage? Are you telling me that you don't believe that kids should get transgender surgeries who are underage? She couldn't do it.
She never answered back, right?
So she starts off with, "Everything you said was a lie." Because that's an abstract thing, right? So she could say, "Well, you use the word pornography, and I don't think that it's pornography to teach about, uh, you know, Jim has two daddies." So to me, that's not pornography when they're talking about anal sex, because it's not pictures, it's just words. So she wanted to have a definition discussion about what pornography was. She called the Bible sexually explicit, which it's not.
What?
Apparently, she's never read the Bible. And, and she, she tried to make the conversation about everything but what I said. So there were a few people defending her. Um, I completely know Dan Chabilla's wife, because she's out of her element. She doesn't know what she's talking about, and she's...
She's just stick to what she does.
She's mad. Dan's, Dan's wife is mad, cause Dan's a coward and he won't, he won't confront me personally, because I'm not supporting Dan, and I'm saying bad things about Dan during the campaign. So he doesn't have the balls to confront me, so he has his wife do it for him, because he's a coward, alright? Which, by the way, DJ Boragad tried to tell you. So, I put it right on her. I put it right on her. If, if, and I even said, and this is very generous of me, right? I even said, "Laurie Keegan, if you come on here right now and you say to me, 'Tom, you've got me all wrong,' I'm not for boys going into girls bathrooms. I'm not for boys being on girls' sports teams. I'm not for puberty blockers for kids that are underage. I'm not for affirming a child's new sexual identity and concealing it from the parents. If you tell me that right now on the record on Facebook, I will write a column in the next Valley Patriot flogging myself, apologizing publicly, and accurately reflecting where you stand, okay? And I think that's very generous of me, because most people will never admit when they're wrong, even when you prove that they're wrong. I'm telling you now, even if I don't believe what you're telling me on Facebook, if you just say it, I will go on the record and I will say, "I got it wrong," and I will champion you holding those positions. She couldn't do it.
Is she, she open to join us one day? What do you think?
Well, I, I did throw it out there. I threw it out there.
But you know what's even more sad?
I'd be happy to have her on the show, but I'm not gonna put up the political doublespeak.
But you know what's really sad? That she's not the only person who thinks like that.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of other people believe the same thing.
There's another school board member who feels the same way.
Why is it that they get to decide on our children that, that way? I don't want my son to, to have things behind my back that I don't know anything about. What the heck?
And by the way, this is a fairly new phenomenon over the last twenty-five years. Prior to the last twenty years, it would be unthinkable as a parent to learn that teachers would be teaching anything to their kids and telling their kids, "Don't tell your parents," okay? It would be unthinkable. You would be fired in a heartbeat if you were a Methuen High School or a Lawrence High School or a North Andover teacher twenty years ago, and you said out loud to a, to a bunch of kids in your class, "Don't tell your parents what we're telling you."
That's, that's bad.
It would be, it would be unthinkable. But if you're a part of the woke mind virus that Laurie Keegan is a part of, she is all in on the woke mind virus of, "We have to, we have to sexualize children. We have to conceal it from parents." And by the way, if you have to conceal it from parents, you have to know inside that what you're doing is wrong.
We giving kids way too many, um, like, too much freedom.
Yeah.
Too much freedom to, to decide and, and to, to decide for everybody, so.
So, uh, I think she's got a good shot at getting re-elected. Because if you are part of the woke mind virus, if you are part of, of the destructive narrative for children, by the way, and you're doing it in the name of children, that's, that's what's the most infuriating is, they virtue signal that what they're doing is good. It's inclusive. It's equity. It's inclusion. It's diversity. They, they do it in the name of doing something morally pure while they're corrupting our children. And prior to me posting this online, I respected Laurie Keegan. I have mutual friends of Laurie Keegan. She may not know this, but we do. John Drew's a very good friend of mine. I have, I have a lot of other friends who speak highly of her as a person. So I respected her as a person. I just didn't think that her political agenda, um, should be represented on the school committee in Methuen.
I agree.
After this exchange on Facebook, however, I've lost all respect. Had she come on Facebook and said, as many others in the past have, had she come on my Facebook page and said, you know what, Tom? That is where I stand. And if you'd like me to come on your show or go out and have a coffee and discuss that this is why I feel the way that I do, maybe, maybe I'll even be able to change your mind on some of this stuff. Had she said that, I would have been, I would have been fine. I would have been fine. Instead, what she said was, you don't know anything about me. Um, you've never had, even had a conversation with me. And then she started with 37 paragraphs of distractions. And friends of hers came on the page and said, you know, you're being a little harsh with her. Um, you, you agree, she put out there that she'd be happy to meet with you when you declined. I didn't decline, but before I meet with you private, now that you've lied, before I meet with you privately, where you can tell me something you can deny in public later on, I want you on the record, on Facebook, to say yes or no, you believe boys should be able to go into girls bathrooms. Yes or no, you believe boys should be able to be on girls' sports teams? And if you want, and, and by the way, I don't even care what your answer is. Okay? That's the thing that most, when I go down this road with anybody, whether it's Laurie Keegan or somebody else, people always want to impugn your motives. Well, you just don't like her because she doesn't agree with your politics. No, I actually didn't dislike her at all. I just thought she had the wrong view. But then when she lied about it, then I started to dislike her. And so I have thrown out, uh, Jillie Guzman, who's, uh, one of my followers and also I think friendly with Laurie, uh, tries, tried to mediate this. I think she's done a pretty good job and has asked me if I would be willing to meet with her. I said, yes, but first she has to answer the questions. She has to answer the questions because you're an elected official. You work for the public, you work for me. And don't tell me, well, you're not a Methuen resident, I don't work for you.
Yeah, but you've paid state, um-
State taxes and federal taxes all go into the Methuen schools. And when you were $4 million in the red, where did that money come from? It came from me in North Andover. My tax money went to subsidy.
But I really don't know what you did that was so wrong. You only listed everything that she actually voted for. You only listed everything she believes in.
Right.
So when she saw it all together, she just felt like offended or something?
Yeah, she felt like she was under attack and she was.
No, she wasn't under attack. Or she read all of that and she probably said, oh my God, is that really me?
Well, it happens, right?
It happens. Wait a minute, am I really voting for all of this? Like, is this really me? Yes, it's you, honey. But besides that, I want to give a shout out to Randy Carter, who's live watching. June Fisher, we have other people-
We need an update on your veteran, Randy.
Yeah.
If you can give it a, give it a intern girl, we can talk about it on the air in a few minutes.
And we have Alejandro Baez.
Alejandro. Oh, listen, I, I had lunch with Alejandro the other, have you met him yet?
Well, yeah, I met him at Gregory Del Rosario's, um, fundraising.
Gregory Del Rosario, say it again?
Gregory Del Rosario.
Yeah, I know you're turning me on, baby. I can't even drink this. Look how silly that looks.
We're having a little too much fun here today, guys.
I have a green cop, so it's melding with the, with the green screen behind me. Um, Alejandro Baez is one of my school committee candidates in Methuen. I met with him at Salvatores yesterday, the day before, all my days mix up because I sleep very late. And we went to Salvatores for lunch. Uh, we were there for three hours. Smart kid, nice kid, very well grounded, um, has a tragic story in his background that he has overcome that I think makes him someone that Methuen voters, I think, can really relate to. My fear is that because he's young, it's going to be hard for some of the older voters to want to give him a shot. But there were nine candidates and I can tell you, one of my four, one of, one of what hopefully will be five, my five candidates will be Alejandro Baez. He's a smart kid, he's a nice kid, and he answered all the questions the right way. Uh, you know, we had to, we had to, we had to finagle the DEI question a little bit because, well, the problem is that a lot of people don't really know what DEI is because there is no actual real definition.
There isn't.
So you kind of have to go by what has been implemented. And one of the things that we did not talk about that we probably should have, that I thought about afterwards was, you know, we talked about what gets taught in the classroom. But a lot of, most of the destruction of DEI, most of the destructive policies of DEI really has more to do with who they hire. So if you have a choice between a white guy that's more qualified than, excuse me, a black guy or a Latino guy, DEI says, give it to the black or Latino guy because of historical oppression and 400 years of slavery and, and systemic racism and white supremacy and all these abstract things that nobody can prove it doesn't actually mean anything. And by the way, doesn't change the bottom line for results for students in the classroom. So-
I don't know about that. I believed in DEI because to me it was more like getting rid of like the legacy thing of like, I'm going to hire somebody from my family or someone that it's, you know, that's related to me or someone that looks like me because we have the same background or that sort of thing. I wouldn't say so much about putting people in positions that they don't deserve because that's not true.
But at the same time, the people pushing DEI are the ones saying, you should vote for me because I'm Latino and you should vote for someone who looks like you.
No.
Tremwen in North Andover, I made that part of her campaign. And by the way, so did, um, so did the guy that ran against Laurie Trichan for, for governor, um, Dan Coe.
And who's our friend in the governor's council?
Uh, our friend in the governor's council, Marie, uh, um-
Eunice.
Oh, you're, oh, you're talking about Eunice.
Yeah.
I don't consider her my friend.
Oh, okay, sorry.
She's a nice person, but like, we don't, we don't hang out. We don't hang out. Yeah, congratulations on the baby, honest to God. Her husband's the nicest guy.
I love babies.
So anyways, you know, this thing with Laurie Keegan, uh, it is going to escalate. I promise you that. Uh, it's not going away. I'm going to be writing a story for the next paper and probably the next one after that.
Okay.
Um, I, I think if people who agree with her on these issues want to vote for her because I'm highlighting this is where she stands, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, maybe they believe in it. That's why I told you, a lot of people do believe in all that.
Yep, absolutely.
Ridiculousness.
So, so my goal, whenever I do this, is to educate the voters. I don't think it's right if you hold a belief and you try to play both sides. I don't think it's right when you're going to be an elected official or a candidate and you're going to try and hold a very controversial position, but try and play both sides and pretend that that's not what you're doing. And so when she came on my page and said, that's a lie, everything you just said was a lie. And then when I followed up with, so then that means you don't believe boys should be on girls' sports teams, she couldn't just say yes. And the fact that she couldn't say, just say yes, means that she's being deceitful. And I don't want deceitful people in elected office, period. I don't want to, listen, we tolerate so much from our elected officials when it comes to lying and deceit and double talk. You'll notice when I've had candidates here and I ask them a question and they'll give you, rather than just give you a yes or no so you know where they stand, they'll give you this, well, some people think yes, but some people think no.
Oh, I gotta look into it.
We're gonna look into it, we're gonna study that, we're gonna, we're, we're on it.
You're giving them context.
Right.
You're asking them the question and they still can't answer directly.
Right. And so when that happens, it's kind of like, you know, I'm kind of sick of it. And I think the, I think the public is sick of it. It's one of the reasons why Donald Trump got elected. Because when people asked him a question, he wasn't worried about what people were going to think about how bombastic his answer was. He just said, yeah, let's deport them all. Now, you can like that or not like that, but at least he was honest. Like he told you what he was going to do.
That's why he won.
And that's why he won. And not because people so much agreed with everything he said. It was that we, people are so conditioned to be lied to and people expect the lie when they ask a question, then when a guy just comes around and goes, oh yeah, we're definitely going to do that. We're definitely building a wall. We're definitely deporting every illegal alien that's here illegally. We're going to go after every single one of them. And whether you agree with that or you don't, there's a lot of people out there that are so refreshed by the fact that he was being honest about what he really was going to do because, let's face it, Barack Obama told you, if you like your doctor, you can keep your doctor, period.
That's a story for another day though.
Right?
Barack Obama.
Absolutely. If you like your plan, you can keep your plan, period.
So-
He looked you in the eye and said, period.
Oh my God, you sound just like him.
Thank you very much.
Perfect. Randy has given us an, an update.
Yes.
He said he's still in the emergency room. Disgraceful.
It is disgraceful. Pavel Piano, I hope you're listening. I know he's working on that, but we need to, uh, I-
Do you want to talk about, a little bit about the ICE incident that happened with the two Dominican illegal immigrants?
Um, not much to say. I saw the video, we posted the video. Uh, they're from Massachusetts, they've got warrants, of course. Uh, the Democrats, I'm sure will nominate them for Senate in the next election because they're criminals and they're illegal aliens. That's all the Democrats care about. They shot a border security officer, which is different than a border patrol officer. Um, they're kind of like the MPs of the border patrol. Um, and, and it's all, and it's on video and you still have Democrats in this country defending it. Like you still have Democrats defending them.
Democrats have funded this app called ICE Block. So ICE Block gives you information on ICE agents, where they live.
It's treason, it's treason.
Where they live, where they are currently doing raids and all of that. I think that's like out of this world. I cannot believe that something like that exists.
It's treason. Listen, if you are on the side of non-Americans over Americans, you're a traitor.
Yeah.
And somehow over the last 50 years, we've, we've lost sight of what a traitor is. Like we've become so tolerant of people who hate this country in this country that, that we've forgotten what a traitor really is. A traitor is, you're on the side of America's enemies. Well, listen, the drug cartels are America's enemies. They're pumping fentanyl and drugs and sex slaves and guns into this country. They're stealing money from this country and they're sending it to other countries. They're trying to bankrupt us, they're trying to destroy our inner cities. They've certainly destroyed the middle class with the help of the Democrats. And the Democrats take their money to push their agenda. And whenever you go on, and I'm, I'm not going to do a whole rant on this, but whenever you go on TV or on the internet and you see videos of crowds of people attacking ICE, you need to think one thing in your head because that's what I think. This is the cartels fighting back. They have infiltrated our country, they have infiltrated the poor in this country. Most of the drug gangs in this country are working for the cartels, whether directly or indirectly. We have biker gangs in the Merrimack Valley that are laundering money for the drug gangs. And the drug gangs are actually an arm of the drug cartels. They're all working together now, all of them. And so you're either on America's side or you're not. And if you're not, you're a friggin' traitor. And all these Democrats that get up there and they want to defend these illegal aliens, they want to do everything they can to slow down the deportation, they cry about due process for Abrego Garcia, who's a murderer and a member of MS-13.
No, he's a family man from Maryland.
He's a family man, yeah.
What are you talking about?
But if you're sitting there saying, no, he's a family man, then you're the traitor. Like, like wake up, wake yourself up.
Regardless of who he is. He was here illegally, no matter what, illegal immigrants have to go.
You gotta go home.
Adios, goodbye. See you later.
Listen, I'm going to say this again because the left still doesn't get it. You took a guy like me who was perfectly okay with letting illegal aliens who'd been here like 10 or 15 years and not causing trouble, right? I was happy with giving them a path to residency, not, not citizenship.
Yeah.
So they could stay and they could work, give them a work number, give them the social security number or whatever, however you want to work that out, give a green card.
That makes sense, yeah.
Let them stay, but the minute they beat their wife, they gotta go home. The minute they drunk drive, they gotta go home. The minute they beat their kid, they gotta go home. The minute they rob a bank or a bodega, they gotta go home. And that used to be my position until the Democrats started defending the drug cartels in the open. They're not even hiding it anymore. And so now you took a guy like me who was willing to negotiate with you on letting the majority of the people who are here illegally, who are good people, to stay. And you've now changed my mind and made me all the way to the far right to say, I'm sorry, but if you're here illegally, you gotta go home. You've got to go home and if you want to come back and you want to apply for citizenship, I'm all for making it easier for you to come legally. I'm all for, right now there's a 10-year waiting list. I'm all for cutting it in half.
I waited seven years to come.
Right?
Seven years. And even, you know, that gentleman that you're talking about from Maryland, he had issues. He was, he is a wife beater. That's why he got in trouble.
And he's a murderer and-
She got like, I saw her, her petition for restraining order, I saw everything she wrote, that's the reason, you gotta go home.
And she has since rescinded, but why did she rescind it? She rescinded it because the drug cartels threatened her.
No, it's a, it's a cultural thing. Latin women will put up with anything. I'm serious, we're supposed to stay.
If I said that, I'd be a racist.
Yeah, but we're supposed to stay. Culturally, generally, we're supposed to stay and put up with unfaithfulness and beat up and all of that.
Yeah, I also think the cartel's threatened her.
Okay.
I mean, I, I just-
Allegedly.
I, I just do. But you know, and then, and then the Democrats come on my Facebook page or they'll say to me in person, where's your proof? You need proof. Listen, I'm not in a friggin' court of law, I don't need proof. I'm smart enough to know that if you're a member of MS-13, that to get into MS-13, you have to kill someone to get in.
Yeah.
That if you are a member of MS-13, that you're a murderer. I don't need to be able to show you videotape of the guy killing someone. Now, maybe you're so morally confused that you need that before you can make that decision because you default to the illegal aliens over Americans because you're a traitor? Maybe you need that, John Curtis, Kyle Burridge, all the people on my Facebook page? Maybe you guys need that. I don't need that. I don't need that. And please, by the way, here's another thing that I'd love to spend a whole day on someday. The people that come on my page and say, where's your evidence? Okay? Listen, this isn't a, this isn't a civil trial in front of a jury. I'm not a lawyer. And I know that you think that everything in the world is law and order because you watch way too much TV, but that's not what Facebook is.
It's not.
I said to someone last night who came on with the, where's your proof? Where's your evidence? Oh, you need proof. I said, in your hand, you're holding a device that gives you access to an internet network with every single piece of information that we've been able to compile since the history of man.
Yeah.
And you're on my Facebook page asking me for documents.
And not only that.
Does that make any sense?
It's gotten easier. It's gotten easier. If you download the chat, um, GPT application,
Right.
you can ask questions. She looks up, or he, whatever, whatever, the machine looks up like information. She gives you resources, all that information, you can look it up yourself.
So is it really that hard for the Democrats who come on my page? Where's your proof? Where's your evidence? Oh, we can't believe anything unless we have documents signed by the government. But i- is it so hard for you to go on Facebook and search and find out that in order to get into MS thirteen, you have to kill someone? That's one of the, that's one of the initiations to get into MS thirteen? Is it really that hard to go online and find out that the marijuana leaf on his knuckle represented the M? And the skull represented an S? And the cross represented the one? And I forget what the other one was for the, for the three? But like, but like, you need me to go do your research for you? And even, by the way, and here's the, the most infuriating part of all this, if you follow me on Facebook, is that if I would've taken hour out of my busy day, which is, I promise you way more busy than the people who cry about this stuff. If I would've taken hour to go and get that research for you and to post it online, they still wouldn't believe it. So why would I waste one friggin' minute of my life to go try and prove to someone something that they don't want to believe, so they won't believe no matter what you say? They'll attack the source, they'll say it's not true. Well, we have moveon.org says that's not true. So why would I, why would I spend even one minute trying to convince you? And by the way, I'm not here. I said this to John Curtis last night. I'm not, I don't do this show, I don't do my newspaper, and I don't go on Facebook to convince anyone of anything. I literally have no interest in changing anyone's mind. My job at the top of my Facebook page, everybody that goes to my page, look at the top, underneath my profile photo, there's a quote that has been there since February of two thousand nine, when I opened up my Facebook account for the very first day. And that quote is, "Make people think it's the only thing that you can really do for them." That is my life motto. I don't care where you stand. I don't care if you disagree with me. Laurie Keegan can disagree with me all she wants. That doesn't make her a bad person. Lying about it makes her a bad person. But when we started this, I didn't dislike her as a person. I didn't know her as a person. So I have no interest in trying to convince you that Laurie Keegan's a bad person. I have no interest in convincing you that Donald Trump's a good president. My view is X. I expressed that on Facebook. I expressed it on this show and I expressed it in my newspaper. And if you, if you consume what I put out, and then you go and you do your own research, and at the end of the day, you're more firm in your belief that I'm full of shit, I'm okay with that. Because I'm not here to convince you. I'm here to get the conversation going and to get you to challenge what you think you believe and what you think you know. And so the next time someone asks you about one of these topics, you're not just repeating what you heard on CNN, you've actually thought it through. Like, you actually have a real answer as to why you believe what you believe, even if it's the opposite of what I believe.
All right, let's run into...
Yeah, our final, our final tie, that just goes in perfect with, with Ozzy.
Well, before Ozzy, um, today, we also lost another famous celebrity.
I was shocked when you told me that. This looks so weird when I try to drink with this.
Hulk Hogan, who has passed away at seventy-one years old. I still don't have information as to what, what happened, so.
So what we're just talking about goes great with my next conversation, but it's not gonna be as long as the Laurie Keegan one.
Hold on, one more time for her picture.
All right.
All right, now it's working, though.
She's actually kinda cute. I know people...
She looks like a nice lady. Like, she would be a nice neighbor that, you know, if I need salt, I know she'll give me some.
She looks like the kind of person that would show up at TMF with a bunch of sandwiches for the homeless, that's what she looks like, right?
She's a nice person. Her beliefs are different.
It's, 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 it's never really with me ever. And I know people always love to attack my motive. You say that because you don't like him. No. It's not that I don't like him, right? It's, it's, it's what the issue, it's what I told you it was. It's not all the things that you try to pretend that it's not. And this happened yesterday with Ozzy Osbourne. So I posted, did I save it or did I really screw this up? I probably screwed it up. I posted on Facebook yesterday, you know, listen, I'm really tired. One thing that really, it's a pet peeve of mine. It gets me in so much trouble. I really should just keep it to myself most of the time, but sometimes I can't help it. I have a pet peeve when someone dies.
Okay, that he was perfect.
There's a script. We live in a matrix. And if you don't believe me that we live in a matrix, by the end of this conversation, you're gonna be completely convinced.
I agree.
We live in a matrix where if you don't at least say out loud what the matrix demands that you say, you're a bad person, and you will be, have your motive attacked, you will have your integrity attacked, you will have, uh, your business attacked, you will have yourself attacked. I have a pet peeve. One of my pet peeves is whenever somebody dies, there's a script that everybody has to follow. And this is the script. And by the way, you may not believe this when I first say it, but watch Channel Seven or Channel Five or Channel, uh, Four News, or Fox twenty-five in Boston on any given night for a week. And by the end of that week, you're gonna know exactly what I'm talking about. And it's this. Someone dies, doesn't matter who it was, uh, the, the local criminal in your neighborhood dies. He dies of a car accident. And the interview the neighbor and it's, everyone loved him. He brought a smile to everyone's face. He lit up every room he walked into. He never had a bad word to say about anyone.
He was perfect.
And so, so whenever someone dies, we have a script that we've been conditioned in the matrix to say, and you are required to fucking say it. You are required to say it, because if you don't, you're a bad person. It doesn't matter who it is. When Prince died, I liked Prince. I think Prince made a huge contribution, not just to music, but exposing the corruption of the music industry. But when he died, it was, everyone loved him. He brought a smile to everyone's face. It's almost like, it's almost like robotic, right? Beep, he brought a smile to everyone's face. Beep, he lit up every room that he walked into. Beep, he never had a bad word to say about anyone. And I was just like, you know what? When I die, and I've said this before, I'm gonna say it again, I don't want that. Please don't say, I lit up every room I walked into, because I didn't. Please don't say, everyone loved me, because we all know they don't. Okay? What I want is just be honest. And my friend Nancy always says, well, what do you want people to say? You know, what I would want someone to say is something individual to that person, that they don't say about everybody else. Right? Because that's a disrespect to the person who's dead. You just treat them like everybody else who just died. You read the same script and everybody moves on like he was never here. I would want someone to say, you know what, he could be an asshole at times, but he really helped people who were hungry. He really helped kids that needed to go to school. That's what I would want. You know, there were times when he was a total asshole and he was unreasonable, and he was hard to deal with. But you know what? He had good points too. I want you to point out my good points and my bad points, because that's what people are. They're good and they're bad. On any given day, they can be both. You can start off your day having a good day and end with a bad day. And the people that you interacted with at the beginning of the day walked away going, wow, that guy's a really nice guy. But the people that dealt with you when you got fed up at the end of the day, and you were in Dunkin' Donuts yelling at somebody because you got your coffee wrong, you're like, wow, what a raving fucking asshole that guy is, right? Am I wrong about this people?
Uh, maybe a little.
What? Talk to me.
Well, I, I think that, you know, when someone passes away, it's good to remember them for the good things, right? It's not so much about bringing up all the negative stuff. You know, when someone passes away, we gotta be a little respectful. That person cannot come back and defend themselves from everything that you're saying.
But tailor it to that person. Don't just give the, don't give this abstract, everyone loved him. Be like, well, you know, he did this. He was a member of the, he was a member of the Lawrence Exchange Club. And he helped kids raise money for scholarships.
Why, why disrespect the memory of someone? They're not here anymore. Nobody's perfect. And I think just...
But say that.
Remembering them for the good things.
You wanna reflect what the person did for the community, or for their family, or, or some of the things they did. But if you give this abstract, memorized script that everyone loved him, he brought a smile to everyone's face, he lit up every room. It's almost, it's almost a disrespect to that person. So Ozzy Osbourne dies. And I'm watching...
The prince of darkness.
I'm watching on Facebook all of these scripts. And everybody's saying how wonderful he was. He lit up every room, he walked into, beep, he, he never had a bad word to say about anybody, beep. And I'm watching this and I'm just, and I'm, I'm, I'm getting more and more infuriated. I'm getting more and more infuriated. And again, I, listen, I recognize that it's an irrational pet peeve, but it's an irrational pet peeve. It is. But I can't help it, and sometimes we just can't help ourselves. And I'm watching this, and I'm watching how he was so wonderful and all the things he did for the world, and I'm thinking, when I was at the Volk School, my, my junior and, I'm sorry, my freshman and sophomore year, so eighty-one and eighty-two, I was at the vocational school as a student. I know.
I wasn't born.
Your mom probably wasn't born, right?
Yes, she was.
I remember kids getting thrown out of school because they were listening to Ozzy's music and Ozzy was their hero. And they were smoking weed and they were doing other drugs, and they were skipping classes, and they were caught down by the shop when they were supposed to be in class and they were supposed to be in shop. And they were over by the doors, but we, we call them the doors at the end of the Volk now, uh, but where the parking lot is. And they were thrown out of school, or they were suspended. And they had problems, and they had serious problems with their lives, and they, and they, and they dabbled in devil worship. And we can make excuses for that as every single one of the two hundred and fifty people commented on my page yesterday. But I sat there and I thought about all of the people, all of the kids that Ozzy Osbourne influenced in a very negative way, and now everybody's kissing his frickin' ass. And it just pissed me off. So I posted on Facebook, marked safe from mourning the death of a man who worshipped Satan and influenced generations to embrace, embrace and promote evil. And I should've added, and take drugs. Well, we are now at two hundred and sixteen comments, as I look at it. Not one person, not one, has agreed with me. And it wasn't just, Tom, we think you're wrong. Tom, we liked Ozzy and here's why. So there was some of that. The majority of the comments are, I'm a bad person. One girl came on, I was a little surprised by this. One girl, and I'm always surprised, especially if it's a good-looking girl, because I went all, my mommy, my mommy didn't love me enough when I was growing up, so I want all women to love me now, right? I'm overcompensating. This really beautiful girl comes on my page, she goes, you know, Tom, I used to really like you. I'm like, wait a minute.
No.
You used to really like me, but over Ozzy, over a friggin' singer? A Satan worshiper? That, that's where you drew the line? Like, I go on Facebook and I, and I, and I denigrate women, I denigrate teachers, I attack teachers' unions. I defend sometimes bad cops before I realize that they're bad cops. I, I do all these things on Facebook, all these explosive things. That's where you drew the line? Like, all the other stuff was okay, but Ozzy Osbourne is, is, that's it, that's it for you now? You, you used to like me, but now that's it? And I was like, wow, the matrix is fighting back. If you're not, you are required when, and this is, by the way, one of the reasons why the Democrat Party is so successful at propaganda. Because they paint themselves as the purveyors of the poor. They're the ones who really care, and if you don't agree with, if their solution is to spend a billion more dollars on a program, even though it doesn't work, but they say they're doing the program because it's gonna help the poor, and you say, hey, wait a minute, it's not really helping the poor, well, why do you hate poor people? Like, they've been very good at creating an envi- a, a social environment where they're the good, they're the good guys and they're good people based on what they believe. And so if you don't agree with them, you're not just someone who has a different view of how to fix the problem, you're a bad person. And so I got a lot of this on this Ozzy thing.
I wouldn't really compare it to a political point of view, I think, this Ozzy thing. It's really about how you honor death and how you, you know, you see it.
Well, I think, I think the, the, the matrix that we're living in now was created by and is being stoked by a left-wing ideology whereby you don't care about people if you wanna deport illegal aliens. And they, they do these stories about this poor man who, um, has three children at home. And he, he just, he wants to donate his kidney to a dying nun, and they're gonna deport him, right? And they do that so that, because they want to denigrate the people who believe that illegal aliens should be deported. And they wanna paint themselves as the good people, the compassionate people. They wanna emotionally manipulate you so that you follow the script. And that's where we, this all comes full circle. It's all about the matrix and following the script. So Tom Duggan goes on Facebook while everybody is kissing Ozzy Osbourne's ass and saying how wonderful he was, and he lit up every room he walked into. And I said what I said. And it has now touched off in less than twenty-four hours, twenty-two hours ago, twenty-two hours later, two hundred and sixteen, and if I refresh, I bet that's gonna be a higher number. And not one person agrees with me, and that's okay. But the vast majority of those people are, there's something wrong with you. And questioning my motive and attacking my integrity, not, hey, Tom, and again, there were some people that said, Tom, you're just wrong. Uh, you know, Ozzy was a good guy, and at the end of his life, you know, he donated money to charity. To which I say, I understand that you, that's your position, but...
He was also married for a long time, had a beautiful family, respected his family.
Cheated on his family, treated his family like crap. By his own admission, in his own book, he said it, treated his family like crap.
All men cheated.
No, that's not true. Tom Duggan has never cheated. I've never had to cheat.
Really?
Never. Even when I was with Paula for eleven years, I had, I had, we had this conversation off the air. I had an extremely beautiful, very famous woman throw herself at me. And she was like, if you leave Paula right now, like, the two of us could have a great relationship. And boy, I'll tell you, I regret that every goddamn day of my life. But I, but I was in a committed relationship raising someone else's kids, and that's, I was a family man, and that's what I thought about when it happened. I've never done that. And, and, and so getting back to Ozzy is that, you know, I'm, people then made it about something that it wasn't. Uh, one guy came on and said, you said he deserved to die. No, I never, I said one thing. That I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna mourn the death of someone who promoted Satanism and drugs. And there were a lot of people who came on, like the John Curtises of the world, although he didn't do it on this thread, with the, where's your evidence, where's your proof? Listen, again, you're holding, you're holding a device while you're making this comment, that gives you access to all this information. And he sang a song called, uh, Flying High Again, which a lot of kids got high to when I was at the Volk. And I had somebody come on, I think it was my friend Al Salvastano, he's a nice guy, we just don't agree on this. And he came on and was like, well, if you actually listen to the words, it's actually not about getting high. We know that. But we also know from being kids in the eighties that artists would write songs with double meanings in it, so that the parents would read the actual lyrics on the sheet and go, oh, this is a song about X, Y, and Z. But the main lyric was, flying high again, flying high again, flying high again. And kids were getting high to the song. Sorry, they're walking around doing the devil's horns and doing satanic symbolism and dabbling in Satanism, because their hero Ozzy Osbourne was doing that. So it doesn't really matter that at the end of his life, he realized, oh, my God, I'm at the end of my life, I really need to, like, with God now, because it's almost over? Right? I mean, does it matter that ten minutes before he died, he found God? I don't really think that matters. That's between him and God. What I'm concerned about is, we're so easy to dismiss someone who had a very serious detrimental contribution to young people's lives in the directions of young people's lives. And I don't think we should be dismissing that. So a guy comes on my page and he goes, well, you're a right-wing Christian crazy. Uh, newsflash, I'm a Jew. This is not, I'm not coming from a right-wing Christian perspective. I'm a Jew. Uh, I converted Judaism in the year two thousand. We've talked about that. We did a whole show on it. I have a very different philosophy than most Christians do, although I, I also think that there's, there's a lot to Christianity and what Christians believe. However, why did you make, just make that about religion? Why can't we just stick to what it's really about? And that is, a guy that influenced people, young kids, to embrace Satanism and take drugs. And just because he didn't influence you, just because you, my friend Al Salvastano said, and I think there was a couple other people that, again, they're just, he's wrong, said, yeah, but Tom, I listened to Ozzy and I knew that it was just an act. Well, that's great for you, but to the kids that didn't know it was just an act.
Did he influence them or did he represent a group?
No, he influenced a lot of kids. I watched a lot of kids go down a very dangerous road in high school and paid a very heavy price for it, and...
I think it's just art, it's music.
And I, well, we say that, right? It's a good discussion to have. We say that. We say that, well, it's just a movie, right? We say it's just art, it's just music. But if that was the case, why did they take smoking out of all movies? Why is it that when people do a song that denigrates a certain racial group, does everybody freak out? It's only a song, it's only a mo- so, so we can't smoke in movies, because that means kids will actually start smoking, because they'll see it in the movies. But then when it's something that conservatives complain about, like someone, I don't know, extolling the virtues of drugs, it's just a movie. Like, you can't have it both ways. We know that there are impressionable kids out there. And by the way, the, most of the kids that I knew at the Volk who went down this road were the kids that were having problems at home. There were kids that were having problems with their academics, which is why they're at a Volk School. But at the Volk, most people don't know, you're in shop for a full week, and then you go to academics for a full week, go to classrooms. You know, about math, history, science, and then for the next week, you go in. They were, they were the kids that were having problems to begin with. They were the kids that were impressionable to begin with, because they either had broken homes or they were having trouble at home. And those are the kids that were having problems. And I don't think we can dismiss that. I, I know everybody wants to dismiss it, because we liked his music. We thought it was funny when he had his MTV show.
He was representing a group of people. I don't think he was infu-
All right.
But you know, bringing that, you know that when the Superman movie came out, um, I don't know when it came out, fifties, forties, there was actually a lot of young boys who passed away, because they went up on, like, on high, like, um, buildings, and they thought they could fly?
Yeah. Well, that was when LSD first came out, so that had a lot to do with the drugs, too. Kids were taking drugs, they were watching Superman on TV, which, there was very few things on TV. Listen, when I grew up, I, I was born in nineteen sixty-seven. So I really was kinda, I really grew up in the eighties. But I still have memories of the seventies. I still watch it. When I grew up, there were five channels on TV. And the TV wasn't on twenty-four seven. If you get up at two in the morning, you put the TV on, there was a test pattern. There was nothing there. You would do it at five AM, and I remember as a kid, living with my grandparents, getting up at five AM on like, any given morning, and turning the TV on at five AM, and there would be the National Anthem. And then somebody would come on and say, welcome to NBC for our programming day. And now, and whatever the first show was, it would be, you know, Hogan's Heroes or Gilligan's Island or whatever it was, and they would start the day. Today, we have these devices in our hand that give us whatever information that we want. We have access to all of this stuff. But back then, they didn't have that. So when kids started taking drugs, they were very influenced by this new TV stuff. And they saw, one of the, one of the shows that was on was Superman. Uh, Batman was on a little bit later on, but Superman in black and white. I remember watching Black and, Black. I remember watching Superman in black and white. I do.
Did you think you could fly?
Uh, I did not think I could fly, but I was also not taking drugs. And so there were a lot of kids in the sixties that were taking drugs that were a little older than me that, when LSD first came out, and then they would put on TV, and they would watch Superman, and because they were on LSD, went up under the roof and thought they could fly, they killed themselves. And then, by the way, that happened to, research that, fact-check me on that. That actually happened a lot. And so you can't say that these are just movies, right? You can't say that these are just songs. It's just an album cover. You pick up Ozzy's album cover and there's upside-down crosses and there's satanic images there. And he knew what he was doing. He knew what he was doing. And this wasn't just an act. And if it was in his head, just an act, which I don't believe for a minute. Let's just give the Ozzy fans, let's give them the benefit of the doubt and say, it was just an act. That makes it even worse. That means these people who are following this guy as their hero, he didn't even believe what he was saying. But they did. And they followed what he was saying. And for a lot of those kids, it was detrimental. All right, so let's...
Rest in peace, Ozzy Osbourne. The prince of darkness.
Anybody calling me names on Facebook, anybody disagreeing with me?
No, 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 no. Randy's saying that's correct.
Really?
Yeah.
Who the hell would, who, who, who's agreeing with me?
Randy Carter, your bestie, your bestie, bestie.
Randy.
Hi, everyone, and welcome in. All right, are we?
I'm getting comments here about my cop. Everybody's consumed with my cop. I think it's hilarious. So, in full disclosure, what you see behind you is the set of the, of the, of Two Guys Smoke Shop, of the Studio Twenty-One Podcast Cafe, which we're no longer at. I'm still heartbroken that we're not there. I miss Dave Garofalo. I miss my former producer, um, Christie. And, but does it mean, it's not a reflection of you? See, women do this all the time. I could be walking, I could meet a woman, I could meet a woman at ten oh five in the morning and walk to the post office with her, and while I'm walking with her, see a woman across the street.
I'm only kidding.
See a woman across the street and say, wow, she's really pretty. And the woman I'm walking with will be like, you're saying I'm not pretty? Like, everything that you say about another woman, they internalize is about them.
You're right, you're right, you're right, you're right.
So...
Nah, but Christie was great. Her accent is, like, perfect.
Oh, it's so cute. Um, in fact, I have, that's my Syrian accent, is her accent.
I know. It's hilarious.
But I do miss the Studio Twenty-One. I miss Dave. Um, and we're, we're very grateful to be here at NCAM, because A, I don't have to drive all the way to San to do my show anymore.
Saving my young guys.
It's literally right across the street, right? Um, and, and Dave and Nick and everybody here has been...
Anthony, Bill, Brian.
They've all been very good to us. Uh, they put up with a lot of my shit. Um, we're still tweaking the, the engineering of the show and the production of the show.
It's very different, because we're on our TV studio. It's not...
Yeah, but it's starting to work. Like, it's all starting to gel. I, 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 when I had Brian Short Sleeve on the show, he's running for governor in Massachusetts, and we are gonna have him back.
Nice.
I watched that show afterwards and just cringed through the whole thing, because I couldn't get past the background. It was, it just looked bad. It looked like we were in my basement, and I just hated it. And I, and I, I gave these guys a lot of crap. Like, every week, I'm like, when are we gonna do this? Like, can we get this done? And, uh, you know, North End of a Cable Access, they're busy people. Like, they don't just, not just doing Tom Duggan's show.
I mean, they have a, a whole channel that runs twenty-four seven.
Yeah, and they're doing stuff like the sheep sharing contest and town meeting and they do a lot in the community and they do, by the way, they do great work. And if you want to do a podcast, this is the place to come, like. Uh, I sat down with them, I came here, I talked to Brian and I said, you know. Dave, uh, and, and I have to part ways because of his insurance situation at the studio. And, boy, you're right across the street, this would be perfect, and they worked up a good price for me. And, um, I would love to get them some business and have other podcasts. Uh, do their shows here at, at North End of a Cable Access, 70 Main Street, North Andover. They, 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 they do really good work, and so he said to me, do you want to do a show, uh, on cable access? Like, he thought I wanted to do a show on cable access, which I, I toyed with the idea. Except two things, one, we wouldn't be able to have our sponsors, right? Because it's, it's a non-for-profit, North End of a Cable Access, so we wouldn't be able to have the sponsors. And that pays the bills. Uh, the other thing is I wouldn't be able to swear because we'd be on cable access, we'd be in like everybody's homes. You know, so it'd be like showing a school committee meeting and then Tom comes on dropping the F-bomb every five minutes, you can't have that either. And by the way, you, try to ring me in on the F-bombs too, because I've had sponsors, I have corporate sponsors, contact me and say. If you can clean up your language, we'll advertise with you. But we can't take your show and give it to corporate and say, we want to sponsor this show. Because the minute they hear the F-bomb, they're gonna say no.
You barely say the F-bomb.
I know, but it, it does slip out, I think I slipped out three or four times today.
No, not once, I don't think.
No, no, yeah, definitely a couple of times today, I definitely, I caught myself at least twice.
I don't hear it, can you say it again?
Fuck.
Okay.
So anyways, I think we got to just about everything I wanted to talk about.
Should we roll up?
Oh, good, can we just do one more thing? Real quick. So the Methuen and the Lawrence elections are starting to heat up. And, boy, I don't know. So, um, John Rigal posted something on Facebook, I shared it the other day, I think it was yesterday, about people stealing his signs. Now, I shared it because nobody should be stealing anybody's signs in an election.
It happens though.
However, it happens in every single election. Somebody steals signs. And it's not always politically motivated. Take it from someone that ran three campaigns myself and have managed several campaigns, uh, and have covered every campaign going back to 85. Sometimes it's supporters of people running against you. A lot of times, it's just kids. Who are taking the signs and just being malicious and they have no connection to anybody, they're just kids. So my advice to John is, by the way, keep posting on Facebook, keep investigating, if you find out who did it. Blast them on social media, it's unacceptable and it needs to stop. It's not ever going to stop, but at least if you can stop them from stealing your signs by, you know, maybe with a ring doorbell or something, find a way to do that. By the way, always file a police report. If you're a political, if you're a political campaign and someone, if you get three or four calls that people's signs are getting stolen, you file a police report. Somewhere down the line, if they catch someone stealing one of your signs. And you've got proof of other signs being stolen, you might be able to prove a pattern. That this person or someone they're affiliated with was doing this. And now you could actually maybe either prosecute them or at least get it on the record so it stops happening, okay?
They did the same to Franklin Miguel, who's running District Eight.
Did they really, yeah?
Yeah, they messed up one of his posters.
And there, and some people, I remember Rich Russell had signs. Um, people were not just stealing them, but they were vandalizing them, they were spray painting on them, they were breaking them and throwing them in other people's yards. So please stop doing that, I think that, I think that's an affront to democracy. Um, and I, and I think people need to stop doing that. Um, the, the other thing that I want to talk about with the Lawrence elections, you know. There are people who get angry when you support them and then they find out you're also supporting other people and other races, and I'm seeing that a lot. Now, I'm friends with Manny Gonzalez. He's a hero firefighter who has literally put his life on the line for this community. He's running for mayor. I'm also friends, by the way, with Brian DePina, he's a friend of mine going, in fact. I convinced him to run at my bash and announced at my bash that he was running for mayor, that's how close Brian and I have, have been and have become. But I have people who say to me on a regular basis, people who are running for other races. Uh, you like, for example, you know that I've endorsed city council candidates that hate the mayor. And then they call me and they say, why are you sharing the mayor's stuff on Facebook? Well, I thought you were my friend, well, I am your friend, but I don't, I'm not gonna adopt all, I'm not gonna take on your war. Just because you don't like Brian or Brian doesn't like you, and I like both of you, doesn't mean I'm gonna not like him because you don't like him. Let me remind you, I endorsed Wendy Luzon in the last election, she campaigned against Brian. Brian was not happy about it. But he never once said to me, you're not my friend because you're supporting someone that's trying to hurt me. He understood that there were gonna be people that I'm gonna disagree with him on. I'm friends with Wendy, I've been friends with Wendy for 20 something years. And so I endorsed Wendy because she was my friend and I thought she could do a good job. Not real impressed, not sure I'm gonna do it again this year, I might, haven't decided yet. Might not. But I think my point is that, especially for first time candidates. You need to understand that if somebody's with you, even if they're with you 51%, take it, take the win. Take the 51%. Don't get upset if you're running in a, in a, in a vote for three election, there are a bunch of people running for at-large city council in Methuen and in Lawrence. And I've had people say to me, I had a candidate call me last night from Methuen. And said, you, you, you shared Janice Annie Pesci's, um, ad on Facebook. So Janice Annie had a, had a thing on Facebook and of course, she's the sexiest woman alive, why would I not share that? Right, just gets more eyeballs for my paper because she's so hot, right? So I shared it and I got a phone call from another candidate saying, I thought you were supporting me, I said, I am supporting you. Yeah, but I'm, I'm fighting with her, I'm fighting against her to get, to get one of those three spots. I'm like, right, but people could vote for three, and if I had my way, you'd both win. Did I not share yours when you posted something on Facebook? Yeah, you did. So it shouldn't be exclusive, no candidate should ever tell anybody. Or give hard time to anybody for supporting another candidate. Unless it's a vote, unless it's a one-on-one, like if it's a district race and you've got two people running for one seat. Obviously, you're not gonna support both people, that's counterproductive, right? But if it's a school committee race where you vote for six in Methuen or in Lawrence, you vote for three. Or it's an at-large city council race where you vote for three, uh, there's nine candidates, you can vote for three. And someone wants to endorse you and someone you don't like, take it. Because some of the people in the other campaign may also want to vote for you. And when you're talking about the mayor's race, if you're running for at-large especially. In Lawrence or Methuen, or even Haverhill too, because I'm getting a little bit more involved in Haverhill now. If, if you're running in a, in a vote for more than one race, like school committees, at-large. The last thing in the world you want to be doing is taking the position of, I hate the mayor, or I love the mayor, right? Because the other person in that race is gonna get at least 40% of the vote. Even if they're the worst candidate in the world, most of the time, the person who wins gets between 50 and 60% of the vote. Neil Perry got 71, that was an anomaly, right? It was crazy that he got 71, everybody talked about it because it never happens. Most of the people get, who win get between 50 and 60% of the vote. That means that most people who lose get between 40 and 50% of the vote. If you're running in an at-large race where people can vote for three, why would you isolate all of the people who love Brian DePina? Or why would you isolate all the people that love Manny Gonzalez? Like, why would you involve yourself in that? Why would in a, in a vote for three race, would you immediately cut off almost 50% of the electorate that you need to vote for you? And so that's my advice to the, especially the new candidates, because they don't know what they're doing because they're new. And most people can't afford a political consultant or a political campaign manager that knows what they're doing. I know the, Julissa Nunez is out there, will convince you to give her money, like she knows what she's doing, she doesn't, she has no frigging clue what she's doing. In fact, I actually look at candidates and if they have someone like Julissa Nunez with them, will not support that person. Will not help that person, will not support that person. Um, I'm in the process of eliminating two candidates that I really liked, that I had, had told I would support, that I wanted to support. That are now so far up her ass that I, I, I don't want anything to do with them anymore. Because they've become as negative as she is.
Everything that she pushes online on Facebook is negative. It's all about against Brian, against, he didn't do the police department, he didn't do that, or he's doing this wrong.
It wasn't his idea to build a police station, well, I'm sure 40 years ago, someone came up with the idea, but he still did it.
He did it.
Right, he did it.
He did it. Her campaigning is all about negative, negativity.
Well, you know, and let's, let's end with that because that's a good conversation really to have. You know, there are people who will only say positive things because they're full of shit. And they just want to get your vote and they're afraid to be controversial, you should be very leery of those candidates.
No, of course, but everything negative.
And then there's the opposite, right, so both ends of the spectrum are bad, then the opposite where you've got the people that go out there and just trash whoever is in office. Think like, and again, I hate to say Wendy, but Wendy's one of these people. Where they, they consistently trash whoever's in office no matter what they do. And here's the best advice I can give you, and I've been doing this a long time. The best advice I can give you is, you know, you, you want to, if you really don't like Brian DePina, or you don't really like DJ Boragod. Or you don't really like Melinda Barrett in Haverhill. You want to go out of your way to praise them on three or four things that they legitimately did right. So you have legitimacy when you, when you, when you criticize them. And so if you're the kind of person like Wendy, or a certain other person that we're not gonna mention. Who goes on Spanish language radio, who's not running for mayor, running for council. And spends all of their time saying that every single thing that Brian DePina does is wrong. For, it's, it's almost like Trump derangement syndrome, from the way he mixes coffee to the way he puts his pants on in the morning, everything he does is wrong. And if he paved roads, it's because the state gave us the funding for the road, we don't give him credit for that. And he's building a police station, but that was somebody else's idea. And if they have an excuse to never give that guy credit. Then when you criticize him on something that he's legitimately doing wrong, you've got no frigging credibility. You just don't, and you will notice, I've learned over the, over the years, I used to be exactly where you guys are. And I've found over the years that if I came out and I, and there's somebody that, that I politically, everyone knows that we hate each other. And I politically came out and said, like with Laurie Keegan, if I came out and said, you know, she did this thing for, um. I know she's got a special needs kid and she does a lot for raising money for special needs kids. If I came out and I gave her her flowers, so to speak, the young kids say. If I give her credit for things that she does right, then it carries more weight when I criticize her when she does something wrong. And if you really care about getting elected and representing people, you have to remember that you're representing other people. And not everybody who votes for you agrees with you on everything you say. So what you really need to do is if you want credibility and you want to be a grown up in this business of politics. You need to say, when you're on Spanish language radio, you know, I don't like what the mayor did with the budget, but I, but I do like what he did with paving the schools. Uh, paving the streets or building a school, building a police station, whatever it is. You want to object, you want to show people that you can be objective. Because what most people are looking for when they're voting for someone is not someone who agrees with them on everything. It's someone that they have confidence can get in there and be objective and call balls and strikes, be an umpire and say. The mayor did good on this, but he did bad on that. And if you can't do that, get the fuck out of the business. Alright, and I, there were candidates that I promised that I would help, that I said that I would help, that I've seen going off the rails, one in Methuen that really disappointed him. Has completely gone off the rails, and I'm like, you know, and by the way, I started off, by the way, we'll end the show with this. I started off wanting to support Dan Schabilia in Methuen. I really wanted to support him, I supported the teachers' union contract, he helped the teachers. I don't really like his style, we don't really get along that well, but he's never really been bad to me. I really wanted to help, I really wanted to support this guy. But he just turned out to be a liar, and he turned out to be somebody who can't give the devil their due and give people credit when they're right. He just wants to hold his finger to the wind and go with whatever he thinks is popular. That's just the wrong way to go, and so I don't think I'm ever gonna support someone like that ever again. There's a lot of people out there that I don't agree with them politically, and I'm gonna support them. Uh, Vivian Marmo is someone that I disagreed with for the last six months, I don't think I've agreed with most of her votes. But I know, Giovanni Rodriguez, I know that they believe what they're doing is right. I, I, I know that they're doing what they think is right. I still think they need to give credit where credit is due, and they need to grow up when it comes to Brian DePina. I, I, it's just my view. However, I'm still going to support them because I think they have a tremendous contribution to make to the community. And they're young, and I want to see them grow up a little bit, I want to see them get up there and say, I don't want to see any more 5-4 votes, that's what I don't want to see, right? You can't have four people who think that the, the, the mayor does everything right all the time. And five people who think that the mayor does wrong all the time. That's, that's, it's disingenuine, it's dishonest, and it doesn't serve the people. When you see five people always voting against what the mayor wants for the most part on the important. I'm not talking about stop signs, so don't tell me, oh, we, we agree with them on a lot of things, that's bullshit. On the important stuff, you need to get up there and you just stop worrying about what your colleagues think about what your vote's gonna be. And call balls and strikes, and I saw one counselor, and we will end with this, I saw one counselor.
You keep saying we.
I know, I know, I know, because you keep doing this.
It's been two hours.
We have this one counselor who, when they were voting for the transfers at the end of the fiscal year, the, the last week, the last day of June. They went around the table and she hesitated, she was the deciding vote. Because it goes 5-4 every, every vote, right? So this person was one of the five of the 5-4, who had, she hesitated, she hesitated, and I sat there and I went, she's gonna do the right thing. She's gonna vote with Michael Plant on this, she's gonna do the right thing. And even though I've been kind of mad at her lately, I'm like, you know what, I'm cheering for, I'm like. She, she hesitated, she hesitated, I'm like, come on, the people are your constituents, not your colleagues. Vote the right way, vote, vote to do the transfer, and she hesitated, hesitated, and then she looked up at her colleagues and she voted yes. Uh, she voted, she voted no. She voted no on the appropriations.
So she's not being objective, right?
She, I don't believe she is, and it's one of the reasons.
It wasn't really agreed on, that whole conversation about the budget was already agreed on with five counselors.
But you know, she could have just voted that their way, uh, and she, I could tell she struggled with it, and that's one of the reasons I like her. And I'm hoping she could.
Because she knew she did it wrong.
I think she knew she was wrong too, and I, and I.
Shame on her.
You know, Diana Disarguelo did that very early in her, in her career as a state rep. And there was an issue that she came to my office and she was literally crying. And she said, I don't want to vote for this thing tomorrow, it's very controversial, I don't want to vote for it, what am I gonna do? And I said, don't show up for the vote, your mother got sick, your car broke down, just don't show up, or show up and vote present. And she went around and around and around and around, and she just cried and cried, this is the very, when she first became a state rep. And, and at the end of it, she said, okay, I, I think I know what I'm gonna do. And she left and I put it on TV the next day and I'm watching the vote and I'm watching the vote, and she fucking voted yes. And I called her and she goes, well, you're mad because I voted the way you didn't want me to vote, and I said, it's not about what I wanted. You sat in my office and told me you didn't want to vote for that. And she said, but Tom, if I don't vote for it, they're gonna primary me. And then I'm not gonna be elected at all, and then I can't help anybody, so what am I supposed to do? Now, why did I tell that story? I told that story because I understand that there are people who want to vote a certain way and somehow feel coerced or like that they can't. But the fact that they're still pausing, the fact that that, that city counselor that I just talked about paused the way she did and thought about it. Means that she still has a conscience, that she's not completely gone.
She was pressured.
That she, that she, I, I think that she can be saved, I think she can be a good leader in the community. I just think she's got some growing that she needs to do, and I'm hoping, I'm, I'm rooting for, I really like her as a person, a lot. I, I, I'm disappointed by some of the decisions that she's made, but again, you guys gotta remember one thing. And that's that a lot of these people are very young, they're kids, and they've never done this before. And they've never run a business before, and they don't, they, they don't have a lot of life experience to call on. And so they're gonna make mistakes, so we'll end up with that. Waving in planes over there.
Yes, let's roll up now.
I'm going to bed. Ed Johnson, uh, state trooper for, uh, Massachusetts, is having his retirement party at the Relief's Inn tonight. I'm gonna try to be there, I really want to be there, he comes to my bash every year, I love that guy to death. I am having a hard time breathing, so if you're watching Ed and I don't make it tonight, I promise I'll take you out to lunch, I'll do something to make it up to you. Uh, but that's at 5 o'clock tonight at the Relief's Inn, I'm gonna try to get there. You know, it's easy to get to the studio when I can't breathe because I just have to walk across the street and I'm back in air conditioning. But to go out and then to be in a crowd where it's very warm in the room, it's very difficult for me to breathe, I didn't even go to TMF last night. Um, so congratulations to Ed Johnson, who by the way, was the guy that found the body of that Lowell kid that fell in the river. Uh, he was off duty, he jumped in a boat and he went looking for that kid and he's the one that found him. And this guy's been a hero police officer for a long time. Um, he's been a tremendous asset to the community. And, uh, the state police, uh, lost a good guy when he retired, I kind of was hoping he wasn't going to, but we will leave it at that. We'll roll up Mel and we'll talk about the sponsors and.
It's not here anymore, I don't know what they did, sorry.
Our outro song is gone?
Yeah, I don't, it's not here, it's playing, but I can't hear it, let me see if.
You don't hear it either? It should be called Worthing, right?
It's there, it's here, it's playing, it's just not playing here.
You think they can hear it at home? No, alright. I hate to dry end the show.
Yeah, you can't hear it.
Alright, okay, well, looks if it's gone, it's gone, I don't, I don't know how we, uh, I'll, we'll take us, but do you have anything you can play? Can you play any, do you have any song you can play, is there anything that will play?
Yeah, we can play something.
Play something? Play Ozzy Osbourne? Alright, let's take our sponsors, Century 21, McLennan Real Estate, the Zanny Pesci Law Office, uh, in Methuen on Mary Mac Street. Uh, Marston and Sun Construction, EIS Investigation and Gun Training. Tomo and Shaken Seaford, I'm really looking forward to Tomo Tuesday. Uh, JG's Ice Cream, it's been very hot, this is the time to get JG's Ice Cream. Clear Path for Veterans New England, almost time to have Randy back. Clear Path, uh, AFC Urgent Care. Pleasant Valley Landscaping Contractors. Enterprise Bank Prime Insurance to Doug McCurry, to W3ON. Website Development, thank you to Dave Id Consoli for helping me get my Google AdSense up. So we're actually, we're making money on the website again, which is good, we were down for a little bit.
Is Dave Consoli back on Facebook?
Uh, I believe he's back, I don't, well, you have to ask the women in his life whether he's allowed on Facebook, because he doesn't make those decisions. I just lost a friend. Quality Catering, Taramar Mexican Grill, who won the Taste of, Taste of Lawrence. Quality Catering, by the way, won the Taste of Methuen. Four Star Lighting and Stadium Chiropractic, a free shout out to my good pal Attorney Paul Lambert. If you have family law issues, you want to have a will drawn up, you want to do estate planning. Uh, Lambert and Rendall, and you want to give him a call, and you can always find him on Facebook, or you can just shoot me a message if you want his number, I'll be happy to give it to you. Let me thank, uh, Intern Girl, you're gonna be going where tonight?
Um, Atika Club, I'm gonna be there with my co-host of.